I'd like to call the meeting of Bryan City Council for January 26th to order.
Now, we'd like to call the Bryan Board of Public Affairs meeting to order. Please join us in saying the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. First item on our agenda this evening is a presentation by the Williams County Port Authority.
Good evening. I'd like to just introduce everyone to our guests. Thank you for being here this evening. We have David Newcomer, Sean Roof, and Don Fitzcharles from the Williams County Port Authority. And then we also have Todd Valentine and Sam Wood from Frontier Community Services that will be speaking to us this evening. As soon as I get your power point out, Mr. Newcomer.
This is separate. Now, before anybody asks me, I'm just gonna say it's our wonderful state legislature that calls us a port authority. We don't have any boats or ships or, you know. For whatever reason, that's what we're denominated. What we are all about is economic development, and that includes housing. The port authority is a quasi governmental agency formed at the discretion of commissioners. We were back in 2007 and have not done much because we really haven't had many opportunities. But in mid '21, having complained to Columbus extensively about the housing situation here, we basically were told by the lieutenant governor that the port authority is the proper entity to pursue the problem. And since then, we have been focused very much on getting to work on that, had a meeting of commissioners, and began our work. The port authority members, in addition to myself, are Sean Roof, Don Fitzcharles, Bill Martin, who's unable to be here, you would know him, Dick Reed, and Stacy Lloyd. And we are actively pursuing various avenues for to develop housing here. One of which you've probably seen in the paper, we build a house in Mopilier. We're trying to develop a basic, small, standard house that we can repeat various other places, including in Bryan. We have tried to take and expand on a housing study that was done by Woodco several years ago. It's almost four years old now. That housing study concluded that we were short three to 450 housing units in this county. We think that's well on date. To build the housing we need, we have lots available, but not enough. We need to find some other way to get large vibes of housing built. One of these is the proposal which we'll discuss in depth shortly. But we actually know we need to build subdivisions and so forth, which are extremely expensive. We've sought donations from private industry. We've received very substantial commitments. The county commissioners have made a very substantial commitment to us. We'll be working a lot more on that. We've worked with local banks. I think they're very interested in helping us. To the extent that we are able to go in and sell these houses, we intend to take those profits and any but that money and put it back into more. So to the extent we engage these activities, we hope to generate funds and then take and reinvest back into more housing. One of the statistics that we've learned that just shocked me, 40% of the people employed in this county live and work, live outside the county. So in addition to that, Bill Martin surveyed the counties, and his conclusion is we're short 2,000 workers in this county. So the shortage is well beyond 300 lots. It appears to us also that what's happening to us is that young people get out of high school here, or junior college, whatever, and they're trained, they have a skill set they want to go work. They don't want to come home and live with mom and dad, and there's no place for them to come to, come back to. So we're seeing our demographic change. The percentage of seniors is rising. I think that's a really driving clause behind that. We've got to create places for our young people to come back to. I don't wanna, I'm not a great speaker. I'd like to have Dawn step up. She knows a lot more about this than I do, frankly, and take it from here. Do you mind, ma'am?
First of all, I just want to thank you all for your time coming in this evening to meet with us and to discuss the things that are impacting not only our local communities, but our county as a whole. As Dave stated, the port authority was put together in 2007. I was appointed to the port authority in July of '21, and since that time, the group has spent quite a bit of time researching and brainstorming how we can positively impact the housing crisis. And we've spent a lot of time with federal and state resources and also university. One of the best places to go is the Joint Center of Housing Studies at Harvard University. And those studies are available to all, so if you want to dive a little bit deeper into what we're looking at in the future, I would encourage you to pull it up and take a look. So as Dave said, we have a serious issue within Williams County. And our location is prime, in between Fort Wayne and Toledo. We're within a 45 to 60 mile distance from the center of Williams County. Drive time is typically to either city completed in 45 to 50 minutes. Just over 1% of the county's 422 square miles are deemed to be urban or incorporated, and 75% of the county's acreage is under cultivation. So we have lots of opportunities there. Our highest employed sectors are manufacturing, retail, and service, with manufacturing leading the way at just over 30%. There's also a higher share of older adult workers, 55-plus, that reside in Williams County, reflecting a higher share of upcoming retirees and more demand for maintenance-free living. Overall, the percentage of population within the county, we have 45% that qualify at the 45 and older. So we have a profound and distressing sign of the need of affordable housing for older adults. And even if every current household moved out and people moved in, there would still be hundreds of people who would not be accommodated for senior living or services within the county. Next slide, please. Our rental housing vacancies are nearly nonexistent, below 1%. Renter household growth among every school district from 2010 to 2018. We have over 1,500 rented rental households with annual incomes of excess of $35,000. We've spoken to many of our employers. Some have shared with us that they'll hire folks from out of town, and they ultimately have lost the employee because there's nowhere for them to move to. They hire them, they bring them on board, and the person stays where they're at. So with 33 major employers of 100 or more employees, we have entered into conversation with many of the larger ones, and they have pledged their support towards our initiative because they understand the root of the problem. And as Dave said, initially in 2018, they had projected that we were 1,000 employees short, and after discussions, they believe that number has doubled. There's been no multifamily development in the past 15 years except for a low-income senior project. And as far as our housing stock, our county is 3.9 percentage points behind the region in terms of offering a housing product built since 2000, and we're 4.8 percentage points ahead in housing product built prior to 1940. So we have aged, aged housing. Naturally, U.S. households are expected to grow older in the next two decades. By 2028, the number of people aged 65 to 74 is anticipated to grow 4.4%, and those over 75 is projected to grow 6.8%. So growth in the number of households is the primary driver for housing demand. For over three decades, the Center of Housing Studies at Harvard University has documented how underlying demographic shifts, in particular, the growing diversity and changing age structure of population, shaped the type, quantity, quality, and location of housing. I thought I would share a testimony by a Dr. Malinsky who testified in front of the Senate Banking, Housing, and Urban Affairs hearing for affordability, accessibility, and addressing the housing needs of America's seniors. In her testimony, she noted that this is a critical moment in which to consider the housing needs of the nation's older adults. While the number of people 65 and over has dramatically increased since the first baby boomers turned 65 roughly a decade ago, in just three years, the leading edge of that cohort would turn age 80. By 2035, the population aged 80 and over will grow by 81% to nearly 24 million people. Many of these older adults will live alone and on limited income, and many will have mobility and other health challenges. The demand for affordable, accessible housing, in-home services, and neighborhood supports and amenities is set to soar. Yet right now, we fall short of meeting even today's needs. So, real estate. The highest demand that we have is between 80,000 and 125,000 price range, and most of the housing stock that is in that price range is used for rentals, seasonal use, vacant or other non-occupied use. So we lack affordable housing from families to begin with and for our seniors to move back to. So the thought process is more housing equals more household equals more workers. And we have the lowest number of unemployed persons, around 618, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, which has published data back to 1990. Next page, please. So the assessment recommendations in areas that the port authority is currently working on, we're making rental housing a priority, which should free up single-family homes, which will help first-time homebuyers and senior buyers who are looking to downsize. Develop additional sites that have utilities in place and are connected to other amenities. Evaluate the downtown housing opportunities, which is generally nonexistent around the county, with the exception of a few that we have intermingle. We need this type of housing to attract more millennials. We also are working to redevelop older neighborhoods. According to the study, Williams County has by far the most homes listed below 50,000 of any adjacent county. And home prices below 50,000 typically require a significant investment. These homes can pose a risk for our community as landlords without the funds or wherewithal to renovate housing units may end up contributing to the blight situation. Next slide, please. Do you want to pop in here and talk about Mopilier?
The house there is the first one we've built. We started out looking for a floor plan, a house, a program that was gonna fix the problem, and kind of zeroed in on the problem that we don't have any builders in the county, in the area, building anything in the price range that the people filling those 2,000 jobs can handle. Most of the new construction being built in the county is 250, 275 and up, something like that, just doesn't really work out. So we settled in on this grassroots floor plan, which is back to the old '50s, '60s kind of, kind of building programs. 1,040 square feet, one-car garage, three-bedroom, one large bathroom set up in it, and we got that one completed and on the market for $149,000. That puts it right in the range that we wanted, and we feel it can go either way with bigger doors, the open layout, that kind of thing, either retirees moving into a house that way and then freeing up an older four-bedroom family house somewhere in a lower price range that helps, or a starter family. Somebody's obviously gotta have a job and everything to make the mortgage payment on it, but that's the reason. And we started out looking at developing lots, and it's a much slower process than we had time for, so we asked everybody to go around and identify existing lots in town that already had water, sewer, roads, and were underutilized, and see if they could find us some that we could afford and put this house on and turn it out to the marketplace. So we've identified some lots in Mopilier, got a couple leads in West Unity, a couple in Edgerton, we're working on a couple in Bryan and Pioneer now, and see if we can build 10 of these units this summer and get them out on the market and get a start. It's not gonna fix our problem, but it's gonna get a start, it's gonna get it rolling, and then as we can get the subdivisions built out and try to bring that type of house into a subdivision and where we can create more of them to help solve the problem, that's really where our, where our long-term plan is headed. The 2,000 jobs that we need to fill there aren't gonna go to $250,000 new houses, and this is the most economical thing we can build right now that fixes the problem and helps, helps move people into those, those areas. And it's, it's really well supported by the industrial base. They understand that the wages they're paying and everything, it works back to that, that kind of number, that kind of housing to make it happen. And I guess that's the, that's the bottom line of that. Hopefully, we'll get 10 of those knocked out this year, and then as we get new developments and stuff rolling along, we can find more places to do more of those projects.
Okay. So the Williams County Port Authority, we're learning more every day about the programs that are available to our organizations. We have worked with several agencies around the county. They're listed. The Land Bank, we worked with them for the 503 Ohio Street property in Mopilier. So everyone has been great, and we're super excited. So that leads us to talk of future development. And Dave asked me to share a little bit of how this process went. So if you recall, in February of 2022, there was a senior project that was presented in Bryan that was ultimately not supported. After I read a few of the news articles, I wanted to have a better understanding of what the issues were impacting that project and why folks would be against the project or resistant to the project when our county needed it the most. And what I found was, folks weren't against the idea of development. They just really wanted something that would fit the feel of Bryan and the community. I believe the statement was made that it's the right project, but the wrong place. So, because I believe that was the second project that was proposed in that area, Mayor Day and I made some phone calls to the Ohio Financing Agency, Housing Financing Agency, and inquired about the process and tried to get a better understanding of why, when there are so many areas, not only around Bryan, but the county, that a development like this could go, why do they keep going to the same area? And what we found out was, this is due to an opportunity zone map that's put out by the state. And currently in Williams County, there are two areas, the one that we're gonna discuss tonight, and then Holiday City, which would be eligible for development, but Holiday City lacks some of the other amenities that are required, like grocery store and things like that. So we've entered into conversations with OFA. They were actually up here last October. We took them on a six-hour tour of the county. We actually sat them at a table with our employers so they could all speak about it. At the advice of OFA, in March of '22, they advised that one way that we could get the conversation started for the county was to reach out to all of the developers that had submitted applications in the previous round and see if we could talk to them about our county and the things that we have to offer, and if one would bring a project to Williams County. So out of 12 developers, three initially engaged with us, and one ultimately has provided the product that the community is looking for. So with that, I'd like to introduce to you Todd Valentine from Frontier Community, and they are out of Chillicothe, Ohio, to present to you the specifics of a 42-unit senior living community that will be construction in partnership with the Williams County Port Authority.
Good evening. How is everyone?
Good.
Good morning. She's gonna be a much better presenter than I am. So as Dawn stated, she had reached out to our office, and Frontier Community Services, just to give you a little bit of background, and there is some information in the packet that I gave you to read on your own, you know, in your spare time. Frontier Community Services located in Chillicothe, Ohio, and when the organization was first started, it was to serve those clients with developmental disabilities. Frontier worked for many years to create access for those services across Ross County and then leading into Fayette County, Benton County, Hocking County, and other counties around south, southern Ohio. As, as the organization developed, affordable housing became another element that Frontier would, would step into. As a 501(c)(3) nonprofit developer, our mission across the state is to provide affordable housing where we can. It's part of our mission, it's part of our goals, and it helps also support our efforts with our DD clients as well. So just to give you a quick rundown, who's ever heard of a LIHTC housing tax credit? So the state of, what's that?
Till recently.
Yes, till recently. When I started in this industry, I had no idea what it was, and now I sometimes wish I didn't have all the acronyms running around in my head. Okay, so basically, I'm just gonna keep it short and sweet and just boil down because it's, it can be a very complicated process. The state of Ohio gets housing tax credits every year. It's like, I think it's a dollar fifty or a dollar seventy-five per person in the entire state. So the state has these federal tax credits that they then do, they allocate to developers within a competitive process, and they call that QAP, which is the Qualified Allocation, Qualified Allocation Plan. In doing that, what they're, what, basically what they're doing is they've created a competition for nonprofit, for-profit, and metropolitan housing authorities. They've provided a competition to put together the best tax credit application process that we can, proposals for various communities throughout the state. So every, every year this time, I'm running around like a chicken with my head cut off, creating these applications. Frontier's spending $50,000 to $70,000 per application. And working with Dawn and Dave, we identified this site, Bryan, as really Bryan's best, we think is Bryan's best chance at this point, even Williams County's best chance at this point of getting funded. It is a senior development, so in Dawn's presentations, she talked about things of natures of where there's just not enough existing housing for, for individuals who are working in Williams County. I believe that these 42 units, if brought to Bryan, would then maybe help free up some of that housing stock that could be available to other individuals, because we do get a lot of individuals that downsize their homes and then, and find, find homes within our communities. The project is, will be 55 years in order, that is a restriction, and is also to those individuals at or below 60% AMI within the county. So just for a quick example, the income ranges are gonna be in the neighborhood of $17,000 to $35,580, $17,000 to $35,580, give or take. I mean, right now, that's a snapshot of what the requirements are for Williams County. And, you know, this project, if it's awarded, it would be two, about two years out by the time it would actually be built and leased. So that, that, that could change depending on the census tracts and the census. So just a quick, there's, I've got a lot of information rolling around here in my head, so I apologize. So 42 two-bedroom range style units is what we're proposing. Uh, this one's fine for now. These units are single-level units with attached garages. They're, they're designed so that they are fully accessible. They have accessible pathways from the front doors all the way to all the community building, the shelter house, the dog park, and any other amenities that we'll include as part of our application. We do provide 15% of the units within the development will be 100% handicap accessible, meaning countertops, cabinets, grab bars, rolling showers, that. meaning countertops, cabinets, grab bars, rolling showers, that, things of that nature. Each unit has one bathroom and two bedrooms, ample-sized kitchen and living room, and they're going to run about 919 square feet or so. They vary depending on building configuration. I've given you in that packet, there's also examples of photographs of previous projects that we've done and that we currently own and operate across the state. And I am going to need bifurcations soon, so, okay. So each unit is Energy Star certified and will also be certified under the enterprise green criteria. So they're going to be very highly, highly energy efficient, as well as all the appliances are Energy Star rated, as well as bath fans and lighting and all the other fun stuff that we're going to pack into these others. They're very durable. We're going to be looking at high-grade vinyl siding with 30 to 35-year shingles, brick accents, asphalt paving throughout the development, which will be maintained and operated by the development. Water, sewer, and trash is included in the rent. And rent ranges are going to be in the range of about $450 to $800 a month net. That's what the cost would be to the residents. And when I say there's a range, per the program requirements, we will have a certain number of units that will be at 30% AMI, 50% AMI, and then 60% AMI. So, okay. We do offer ample community space, shelter house, outdoor patio, and dog park, as well as a centrally localized mailbox shelter. And because we're doing the garages, we do have storage space for waste wheelers, so we do not, we do not utilize dumpster enclosures. They tend to catch fire for some reason. Not in senior developments as much, but. So we try to run a very clean, nice-looking product. If anyone's ever been to Delfosso, Ohio, we have a project on Elida Drive. That's 40, 32 senior units, and we just added 40 family units to that property this past We're 100% occupied. We've got a waiting list, probably six, eight months now. So I think at this point, I'm just going to let you ask questions, if that would be all right. Because I'm sure you have them, and I'd like this to be more of a conversation than you.
Dick Reed, he's a formerly council member of the Southern Port Authority.
So the Delfosso senior, at least, I think it came online in 2010. Yeah, and we've done some of the multi-story products before, not a lot. It's happened with us, and most of those communities have been, they were either really small parcels in the community, one in a higher density, or we were in a much more urban area like the City of Grove City, Groveport, those areas around Franklin County, central Ohio. So these are a few of the projects that we have. We've, this project is River View, which is down in Logan, Ohio, Hocking County. And I'm not real sure about that one, but it looks like Cross Creek Meadows in Chillicothe. If that's the project I'm thinking of, that's probably a 12-year-old project as well.
I have a couple of things. Number one, I see the one on the left looks like it's a combined unit, like a duplex. Are they all single-family?
Yes.
Or would they be, would there be some that would be like a duplex like that?
Well, if you go back to the site plan.
So for example, I provided problems with the site plan.
Yeah.
So like this building here, this is a triplex, and it's a non-back-to-back unit. So this is three units here, and then there's the fat patio is only one of these three units. As conversely to this building, this is a sixplex. So it's two, four, six. They're back-to-back, and they all have the garage, they just, it goes on both sides.
And they all have, what did you say?
Garages.
Garages, okay. Because that's important for a senior. There's no way I would want to get out in yesterday's weather.
No. And residents will be able to pull up to their garage door, hit their garage door button, the garage door goes up, they can pull in, they can close the garage door, stay in their car until the garage door is shut, make sure you turned the engine off, and then proceed to, you know, take your goodies from Walmart or wherever else you're going.
I think this is a great idea. Where are you planning on putting it, though?
The actual project?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably I'd tell you that, shouldn't I?
Yeah.
Okay. So within your packet, there's a site plan, there's one that's zoomed out a little bit. We're talking about 9.2 acres off of County Road C.
Fountain Road Drive by Community, that's what's coming.
Yep, just beyond the CHP.
Okay.
We call it Casualty Fountain Road Drive around here.
Okay.
Which is why, that's okay.
I've got it both ways, I've got it.
I've tried to correct Dawn so many times, so I'm just kidding. And I do want to speak to this too, because I do think it's important for them to make this presentation before, you know, we read things in the paper.
Yes.
As government leaders. And I appreciate them coming. But the Port Authority did work really hard to seek out Frontier, and Todd's been working with them, and also our utilities department, our engineering department, for the last several months to try to make sure that this was properly vetted before it came to you. And I could not be more pleased with the project. Again, I personally did travel with Dawn and Dick Reed, met with Todd, met their facility manager, met one of their residents that had been there for a number of years, and just got to check the new facilities out, which were multifamily, but also the senior, and the building quality is high. I even like the little details that we don't think about, where if you look at that picture, the sidewalk curb matches the street so that the elderly, the women who are taking things out, aren't tripping on the sidewalk curb. So they've pretty much thought of everything. When you go into the garage, it's a one-and-a-half car, so there's a little room for storage, but it's also very easy access, whether you're in a wheelchair or walker or totally mobile to get right to your kitchen. That's the first thing that was off the residents that I saw. And then into a living room, the bedrooms were separated. But just a really nice facility that I think won with the one-story, everyone has a place to park their car, there's at least one community room. I just think that this is a really good fit for the things that we have heard from the community that they didn't maybe think fit in the former two projects. So I'm really grateful that they sought this and made those connections, and that we've been in relation with that to you, and are willing to pay $70,000 to $80,000 for an application, just to try to get the funding to make this work. So I appreciate everyone involved, and hope that board and council will agree that this is a great opportunity for our community.
And this application's due on February 9th, and I apologize, all my color renderings for this project won't be ready till next week. Because that's one of the things that we are spending money on. We do a good job of doing color renderings, much like what you see in the packet that I have and what we have up here on the screen. We also do a complete market study to make sure that not only is this project viable financially, that it's viable long-term, that it can be supported by the rent levels that the community can support. So, and so to go back to the tax credit itself, what we do is we, once we're awarded tax credits, which if we're awarded in May, then we take those and we try to sell PNC, US Bank, some of the other large equities that buy housing tax credits. And the reason they want to buy them is because they want those credits to put against their income. And then doing that, it generates cash rather so for the project. So if we have a $10 million project, which is roughly where we're at on this one, there's going to be about nine, a little over eight and a half, yeah, about almost $9 million worth of equity that US Bank or PNC or High Capital or one of those other organizations is going to provide. What that allows us to do then is have our, have a lower permanent loan, which then conversely allows us to have the lower rents that are needed to meet those AMI requirements that OFA requires. So for 15 years, PNC or whoever buys the credits, they get, so if this project has $1 million worth of credits, they're going to get $1 million worth of credits for over, it's, they usually, it's 15 years, but it's 10. They usually amortize that, so it's 10 years. So they get what they want, the community gets the housing. We're going to be the owner forever. Every project that Frontier's ever built or been a part of, as long as we can buy it, we buy it. Frontier is acting as sole developer and owner on this particular application, so there won't be anybody else to buy it but us. Sam's going to, Sam Wood is our CFO.
He rode up all the way up here with his stuff.
I think I've got permanent fingernail marks in my dashboard. If you want to rake him over the coals on some numbers, that'd be fine. I want to videotape it, because it's so much fun.
We're actually being recorded on YouTube, so.
Okay, great. So Sam is getting close to retirement, and one day, he will retire. Of course, he said two years ago he was going to retire, but he didn't. So, but one of the things that Sam keeps drilling into me is, don't ever let a project go to somebody else. We, Frontier will buy them. So basically, we're in the partnership with the equity. We get to, and we manage it. We have a third-party management company. They will have a manager on-site daily, if not all day, every day, depending on what the project needs. And then we have a, there's always a maintenance technician that is also there to help the residents, not only with the buildings, but the little things that they need, light bulb change, garbage taken, maybe help take the garbage out to the curb, that kind of thing. So our mission is to not only create these developments, but is also to take care of the residents. Frontier Community Services also provides supportive services, coordination for the residents. So we are currently, my core cohort back at Chillicothe, she's been talking with all the local nonprofits and agencies that provide services within Williams County and Bryan, and we're working with them to make sure that we identify the different services that are available, and then if this project moves forward, we'll be coordinating that with our management company and those entities to make sure that anyone who qualifies for wheels-on-wheels, transportation, house cleaning services, things like that, whatever's available, we help them get to that, those services as well. Most of our residents, like the lady that you met, she'd been there since the day the project opened. So, and I don't think she's ever leaving, which is great. We don't want her to. So that's why we do it. Any questions? I've thrown a lot at you, and I've been kind of disjointed, because I was just supposed to have three slides, but, you know.
So you probably can't answer this question, but what do you think your odds are for getting the funding?
Well, the project does not have a perfect score. It's competitive. Dawn's been working the other side of it with OFA. I think the fact that OFA came up and met and has done as much work, I think it has a good shot, a very good shot. I'm already in it. I mean, we've already spent most of the money that needs to turn the application in, we're already in it. So if we didn't think it would have a good shot, I would, I probably would be in it.
So what happens if it doesn't go through? What's the plan then if it doesn't go through?
Okay, so say.
Or the funding doesn't go through, I should say. What happens then?
If the funding doesn't go through, I don't have a mechanism to build it on my own with Frontier. Frontier, I mean, we're nonprofit, the tax credit program, the affordable housing piece, that is part of our mission. We don't do market rate.
Does the Port Authority have a planning case something?
No.
Okay, that's what I was curious. I think this is an excellent plan, and I hope we get it.
What we did get from OFA on the meeting, though, was their agreement that they needed to prioritize this area and projects up here. They have the ability in state and in their projects to say, this region has been underserved, this community's been underserved, things like that. And while they're not guaranteeing us anything, they told us they were going to work at prioritizing this area so that we would qualify and score better for projects and make it happen.
And I don't want to upset any other communities, because the Port Authority is really diligently working for the whole county, but of the six hours OFA spent, I believe three of them were in Bryan, including the lunch with the industry members. But they spent a lot of time here. They were told about this potential project. We showed them the site. We made them as familiar as we could in that bus trip, so, and I got to thank Dawn for that too, because she coordinated that effort and let Bryan and I go along for the day.
And the only other site that qualified for was in Holiday City. That's obviously where I come from there. But it doesn't really fit what needs to happen here. It's not going to happen there, it can't be done there, so all the push has to be put behind the project to go here. In my view of the overall, from the port's perspective, this is the best project we can push to get the maximum punch out of moving people that need different housing up, freeing up 40 houses or so quickly in the area that other families and new people can move into. There's nothing we can do ourselves that would make something happen that quickly. That's what I like about this project, and fills the need for the people that need that, and it fills the need for our industry and our people who need employees and families who need housing. Two banks are locked, and we're working.
Is there, okay. So obviously, my question is, this is going to hopefully be a ripple effect, freeing up homes that are bigger for families to move into, to fill the need for people to work in manufacturing and/or wherever.
You mean, within the tax credit develop, tax credit world?
Or single-family.
Potentially, yes.
You've got to get a man.
And I'm bringing, I would be bringing along a general contractor out of St. Mary's, Ohio, RCS Construction runs. They built our pipe run phase, and they're currently building a phase for us in Abbe Sandusky, and another one in Hillsboro, Ohio. And by far, one of the best contractors I've ever worked with.
So this leads me to another question. So in this area, was there again nine? In this area?
Total, I think it was nearly 15 or 20. I've taken this first development, 9.2, the Isaacs agreed to 9.2 acres.
So there's room for expansion.
There is.
Possibly.
Possibly.
So, can I raise my hand a little bit?
So one of the challenges as a developer within the Lytech world, and being any developer, honestly, is land that is zoned for multifamily. That is, you know, the census tracts are one thing, you know, and all the points are one thing, but if it's not zoned properly, then I got to go rezone it. And if I have to go rezone it, and I don't. And if I have to go rezone it and I don't have cooperation from the locals to rezone it, a lot of times potentials that I have that would, I would know would score. I would know would get awarded, you know, based on my experience. Can't even get it to the finish line because you can't get rezoned. Because there tends, there tends to be a stigma, especially for affordable housing. Not to toot our own horn, but every project that we have that we've built from the ground up, right from the project, not something that we acquired that was 30 years old and did a rehab on, they all look like our Delphus project. And how they look and how they perform is very important to us. That is our primary goal. It's not just to make some money. Because we are a nonprofit developer, but nobody's going to do these deals unless there's money to be, to may made for our other endeavors that we're doing. Just honestly.
Dawn, I have a question for you.
Okay, good. I just want to say one more thing on top of what he's saying. This is an investment for us. And I'm, I'm going to be looking to, if this is awarded, we, we all have a good relationship and this works, I'm going to be looking for more property, not only in Bryan, Ohio, but all of Williams County. Because this would be our farthest northwest property that we would have. Forty-two units is a small deal, so I'm going to want a little bit more volume over time within Williams County, if I can.
What's your biggest?
Biggest development? So Kingston Mount Manor 3, or Kingston Mount Manor 1, 2, and 3 is a senior development in Circleville, Ohio, Circleville Township, Circleville, Ohio. Pickaway County is where I live. How many units is there, Sam? 145, but that was over three phases. Problem is, especially with, everybody knows construction costs are getting crazy. Have been over the last 20, 15 years that I've been in underwriting. Prices just keep going up. Everybody, so. But OFA still keeps an eye on how many credits they'll allow for each project. And a lot of that gets pushed around by market equity pricing. When the corporate tax rate was reduced, we went from seeing pricing in the 98 cents on the dollar to 90 cents overnight. So the problem that we have is projects now that I'm doing, like this is 42 units. I'm asking for a million in credit. 10 years ago, we could do 42 units on 650,000 dollars in credits. Yeah. When I say a million or I say 650, 650,000, that's, that's just one year, one year. Because each year, the bank gets to take that amount of credit off their income. For 10 years. So if they pay 90 cents, say, for example, they say they pay 90 cents on the dollar and they're getting a million dollars in credits, they're getting a 10% profit yield. And that's the incentive to get them to invest. Because if, if the tax credit program had not been created in 1986, they wouldn't have, there wouldn't have been any more affordable housing. Because the tax, the tax we pulled for that, in that year closed. Your doctors, your lawyers, they weren't, they weren't investing in multifamily projects, affordable multifamily projects to put against their income. That's why the whole project, that's why the whole program is created in that, in that sense. So the program's been around a very long time. Most programs like this, they tend to just sunset and they do something. It's been very successful in providing affordable housing across the state.
So obviously Frontier wants to build this.
Yeah, I wouldn't have driven three and a half hours today.
Okay. I mean, just so we understand.
Yeah.
The only thing that's holding you up is getting that million dollars plus track?
Correct.
Tax credit?
Every, every project we've gotten credits on, except for once, we've completed the project. The other project didn't get completed because there was a mistake that I made five, 10 years ago. Well, but then the next project that was awarded, because we had to give the credits back, was, was another one of our proposals. So, still a success, just not as, just not as good.
So Sam's going to check your work so we don't all miss out.
Sam is always checking my work. The reason, I think the reason he's here tonight is because Greg told him to come.
Maybe he thought you needed a buddy since we do live so far from everywhere else.
I found that out today.
Sorry.
It's okay. I've been through here before. My son is playing football at Grand Valley State. So I've, last fall, I came through when, when we identified the site.
Go past our water tower before you go home.
Yeah. It's no, it's no Dum Dum flavors.
Dum Dum flavors?
Yeah, we have the largest Dum Dums in America, a water tower. Are you selfish? Dawn, you had something to say? We have told you this, right, Todd? You have to, you know you have to come to the podium.
There's a question. So you referenced AMI and it might be helpful for folks in the room and at home to understand what AMI is?
Yeah, so it's.
And some of those.
Average median, average median income.
Yes.
So, so for Williams County, the 60% rent, AMI, the max rent for a two-bedroom unit is a thousand dollars a month. Now, we also include utility allowances in there. So we're, we're paying for the water, sewer, and trash. And then there's the other utilities that they have to pay on their own. Electric, gas, if it's available, phone, cable, all that other stuff. So, and that's, that's all based on MHA allowances through HUD. Even though this program isn't dealing with HUD, there are certain benchmarks that the housing credit program uses that are generated by HUD just because it's a lot easier, I guess. So, so, so on a 60% unit, the most I can charge is a thousand a month gross. So if the utility allowances are 100 per month, then the net rent would be 900. So I'm structuring my rents, the rent range I gave you, the maximum rent I'm probably going to have is about $800, maybe 810, 825, because we're two years out. We don't know where we're going to be at in two years for sure. So I'm, I'm underwriting these rents to be lower to make sure that this project, if it works at those amounts, then I know I can go up if I have to, but I don't want to. Because our market studies telling us something different. Okay? I'm trying to have a market advantage. Because we want, we don't want to do something and it just, you know, it just falls apart. We don't want the wheels falling off and then people are calling me. We want it to sing. And we want it to be a place that people want to live and the community's proud to have it there.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah.
Let me finish my.
Yeah, you weren't done yet.
Yeah, I wasn't done. Okay, so you are applying for $1 million in tax credit?
From the housing agent, the housing authority, yes.
Correct. Does that mean it's a million or nothing? Or will they say, okay, we'll give you 600,000?
Okay, so could that happen? Sure. So for example, and I don't have it off the top of my head, within each geographic pool, there's a certain amount of credits that, that the state has allocated that they are going to put in those areas. So for like Bryan, Ohio, it's the rural pool, the new affordability rural pool. So let's just say, and I'm just throwing numbers around, let's say it's $5 million. So if every project took a million, that would be, five projects would get awarded in a, in a pool. And for the rural pool, that's probably about the number of projects that typically get awarded. So OFA also has what they call the strategic initiatives pool, which is this area over here that I really can't compete for. It's just probably a little bit of a pile of money that they can do whatever they want with. So if they, if they do four and a half projects, let's say, in the rural pool, and there's a half a million dollars in credits left over, plus they got a little bit here or a little bit there, other sources that they have. They have approached us before and said, hey Greg, you know, we know you, you were showing a million in credits. What could you do with 800,000? And Sam, we've done that probably, just the time I've been with you, we've done it a couple times.
Yes, maybe increase.
Yeah. There's other sources that they can increase to kind of create those gaps. So for example, the pipe run development I was telling you about, that was originally proposed at 44 units. It was awarded in the strategic initiatives pool because there was only so many credits left in the pool and we were right there on the edge. So they called us and said, you know, we're going to, we want to award this deal, but here's the credits. What can you do? Well, we, we ran our, and we basically eliminated one building, four units. And the project was then awarded. And we ended up building 40 units rather than 44. So yes, it can happen. I can't control it. But it usually comes in a phone call right before the awards come out, if, if that's what happens.
I'm only thinking, I'm always thinking about.
Yeah.
I mean, I was just wondering, if you did not get that million-dollar tax credit, thinking outside the box, are there anything we could possibly talk about, you know, as far as investment or private investment to get you? Obviously, we need the housing.
Yeah. And, and again, Frontier's our nonprofit, we have a mission, we have a board. And this is affordable housing, the light tech program is included in our mission. For us to do something outside the box, I'm not saying it's impossible or couldn't be done. But I can't, I can't give you any answers on how that, what that would look like because it's not something we normally, we normally do.
Okay.
And honestly, I've never had a city ask me that question.
He's in charge of the electric department?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I mean, if, if you wanted to invest as a city, the lawyers would have to take a look at that and see what can be done.
It does get a little tricky with taxpayers.
Yeah. Because, because keep in mind, I mean, the Port, I mean, Frontier will end up being the ultimate owner and the steward of this. And, and the 55-year requirement, the income restrictions, all these things that I'm saying I'm going to do, all that gets memorialized as part of the program. And then there's a restrictive covenant that gets filed right after the project, right as the project is being completed, which locks in those standards. And we have to continue that for 30 years. Now, when we get to 30 years, could something different be done with it? Sure. But the reality of it is, is the project, the rents that we have them at and what they're serving is the market for Bryan. So it's not like we're going to get to year 30 and we're going to take a 30-year-old project and we're going to say, okay, now the rent's 1800 a month. Not going to happen. And, and I've looked at doing market rate. I, I worked for another company before I went to Frontier. And we were, we did mostly tax credits at the other company. We looked at doing market rate, taking the same product, because we knew it would work. You just can't, you just can't afford it. You can't pay for it. Even if you invest, say you want to get your, you want to get your money back, if it takes 30, 35 years to get your money back, most investors aren't going to want that kind of return. Because you've got, because the market, or the market, the rents need to be where they need to be. And that's dependent on how big your perm loan is. So on a market rate deal, it's flipped. Your perm loan's going to be much bigger. Your equity's going to be smaller. Therefore, you need higher rents to pay for that perm loan and that debt. The debt coverage ratio can be a killer, especially now with, you know, we're going to be looking at interest rates from what were a little over 4% for us on our last couple of deals. We're going to probably be up around 7, 8%.
Todd?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I just, clarification. What the, what was it that you said?
The rents? Okay, so I'll just give you a quick breakdown. So right now, I'm projecting I'm going to have five units that are going to be a max rent of $500 a month, which with utility allowances, the net rent would be 431.
And what all is included in that, in that number? I mean.
It was trash.
Trash, sewer, and water.
Okay.
So for example, we don't, we don't like to have individual meters across the 40-unit project because if somebody doesn't pay their water and then the city's coming out saying, we got to shut the water. The, our management company will pay the water bill every single month by clockwork. And that's pulled out of the rents.
What about interior and exterior maintenance?
That's, that's all us.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's basically, I mean, it's a rental, it's a rental apartment. So we have a lease agreement, there's rules in the lease, you know, no drugs, no kids, no, you know, whatever. No dogs over 300 pounds, that kind of stuff. So the management companies are very, they're, they've been tasked to make sure that they're following the lease agreement. So if it's in the lease and you're violating the lease, you got to correct your action or you're, you're gone. Okay?
So they're very strict on who goes in there?
Well, yeah, there's compliance, there's compliance. They have to, there has to be a full compliance review. Okay, so they're, they're going to be looking at age because it's 55 years or older. So for example, let's say John is 58 years old, but his wife's 43. Okay? She can live there because they're married, because he's the head of household. He's, he's the senior component. Now, if they're both working, then both their incomes have to be counted. So even though the age difference might work okay, maybe their income might not. So the income is just as important as the age requirement.
But if they have a child, then no.
No.
What happens if he passes then? Then she has, she can stay or she leaves?
Oh my. That's one, I'll be honest. Well, I'm, I'm really the nuts and bolts guy. I mean, I do all, Keegan and I do all the funding applications and I do all the engineering, the architectural. I work with those individuals and all the other things. That's a good question. No one's ever asked me that before.
That's a good question.
Sam, you don't know either, do you? I don't know that we've ever, I don't know that we've ever seen that because typically. Well, the odds are a couple like that who is actually, actually working is probably not going to qualify. Especially for a senior development, most of our residents are widow women 65 and plus typically. That's what we see. But that, I mean, I've never had that question before, but.
If there's, if there's two people living in a home and they each have a car, these are all one-car garages, is there a specific place they have to park? They're not going to let them park on the street, are they?
No, we don't, we don't allow parking on the, on the, on the main streets or the, even the connectors.
What we have is, so you have the space in the garage and then there's a full space just outside the garage. So they won't be able to get both their cars in the garage, but they can at least get one car in the garage.
So one would be in the driveway and one would be in the garage?
Yeah. And then we also have some smaller, visible parking areas for overflow parking.
Okay.
So then, and we've got some parking here for the community space. What we found on our senior developments, most of them are single personal occupancy and they have one car.
So when the grandkids come over, they, they park in the garage, they go in.
You'll have to get rid of your motorcycle.
No, there's a car and a half.
A car and a half. You could squeeze a motorcycle in there. Yes, sir.
You just touched on when grandkids come over to visit. What do grandkids come over to live? Are their children bring their kids to live with their grandparents?
That'd be a lease violation and that would have to be corrected. And our, our managers on site are, they watch more, they watch everybody like a hawk. Especially the senior developments. If you've got four people living in a unit with grandma, it doesn't take long before anybody knows that that's happening. And we take swift action to start that process. They either got to correct the situation or everybody's gone.
Is there a visitation limit? I mean, if people come to visit?
Yeah, I mean, each, each, each management company's a little different, but typically it's built in that they can, you know, they can have grandkids over for, you know, two, three days over a weekend or something. It's the habitual all the time where it starts becoming problems. You know, kids are outside with baseball bats beating on the buildings and things like that. That's, we just don't allow that. It's truly a senior living environment is what this project will be.
I don't doubt for a minute that there's a need for what you're proposing. I mean, listen to what I think Dave said earlier, that we have, was it like 2,000 unfilled jobs in Williams County? We just don't have the people. And if they don't have a place to live, we're not going to get the people. And we have, we have an industrial park north of town, I guess is a main concern of mine. We've had for some years. And I thought, boy, when we, when we develop that, this is going to be a good thing. And I guess we have had some interest in it. But I always wonder when, when people show an interest in it, you know they're going to do some investigating about the workforce and stuff in the area. And I, I don't know this for a fact, but I can't help but think that that's part of the reason that we're not seeing more.
Do you offer any tax abatement for those businesses that might?
That's a good question. No.
I'm sorry, what was?
Tax abatement?
Tax abatement.
Yeah. We sure do.
Because just, just because you build it doesn't mean they'll come.
No, no, I understand.
Yeah, there's always, and I, and I'm not going to say that I'm an economic wizard or anything, but yeah. And even for somebody like me who's looking at different areas for affordable housing, if I can get, if I can put housing in and then see a tax abatement on a property tax, or even if. if I can get, if I can put housing in and then see a tax abatement on a property tax, or even if, even if it's only four or five years, that's enticing. And it only makes the project stronger. Because it gives, it gives, it's just like anything else, if, if you had your own home, and you didn't have to pay property tax for a few years, you, what, what could you do with that? And.
You have to qualify. That's, that's, yeah, that's the reason I'm involved with this stuff. What we do is industrial. And fixing the housing problem at whatever level is the goal, to get more bodies out here working. I feel that we're, we're in a spot where we are not going to be able to fall industrially anymore, until we can get more population back into the county, and more working-age population back into the county. And this, this part of the program is not part of my original scope of, I thought we were doing, but it fits in well if it's going to free up other houses, if it's going to bring people into here, open up other spaces, allow us to attract people in, because our, our cost of living, our cost of housing, all that is very attractive to people outside of here. And I'm hoping that we can bring those in, yeah. Where we're strikers, I talked to them a little bit. They have three times the capacity in the school that they're using right now. Class sizes that are down to eighteen or so in class are places people would just love that kind of attention for their kids and that, if they could find housing to move out here. Dealing with Menards for years, when, when they're up there, Menards brings people into the county like nobody else we've ever seen. They take all those stores, look around, find people out there that are doing a good job, and hey, I don't want to work in a store anymore. How about not Holiday City? They want out that way, we'll send you out with a job and pays more. You can get a house, you can get all those things. We're having trouble finding places for these people as they're coming in. My, my accountant, Kelly, rents houses out, and throws them up on Facebook when she gets an opening, fifty calls a day.
I bet they don't mind not getting it.
Fifty calls, she shuts, starts shutting the thing off, screams the applicant, has it filled again the next day. There, there are a couple other projects that, that we've talked about here in the county to do something similar to this. They have a waiting list for a year, of mostly seniors trying to get down to a place where someone's mowing the lawn for them, plowing the snow, doing the things they don't want to do. They would love to sell that house and, and get into something like this. So I think, like everywhere else, that they've experienced it, we're going to have a backlog of it, we're going to have, as we do in other similar situations already. And from the port side of it, we're trying to get housing people to buy, we're trying to develop rental properties, duplexes, whatever we can to fill the market out and fix the industrial problems so we can get going again. I, that's all I deal with, is industrial stuff, and that's what I hear from all of my customers and all the other companies that we deal with, is people, people, people. That's, that's our next resource. And if we don't start investing as a, as a county, as the cities, as everybody else, in trying to increase that population and bring people in, we're done drilling.
Well, you know, there's got to be a reason that it's like this, I mean, that we don't have more development than we have.
I'd love to be out building buildings right now, and try and bring in more companies, but that's the, about the second or third question I ask. Can I have five hundred people? No. You can get five hundred. No, if we were short two thousand or so, if you've got a small warehousing operation, if you've got something that uses a few people or is highly automated, we can help you out, we can probably do it, but you're going to steal those ten people you need from somebody else that, that already has.
Well, they got to have a place to live.
They got to have a place to live to be here. Our industry is, they're busing people in from Toledo and other areas, they're, they're, they're getting really creative with what they're doing to keep the doors open. They're investing heavily in automation and everything, but we need to stop the population decline that's been going on in the county. And give a reason right now, you know, it's my opinion, it's going to cost us some money to do housing developments, it's going to cost us some money to do new lots, that kind of thing. But if we don't invest in that stuff now, so that we have room to grow the people and the population, we, we can't, we can't expand industrial anymore.
We're going to Toledo, I think it's Wednesday. Going on twenty-four, going by the industrial park in Napoleon. And I don't know, I have no idea what it is, or something big is going in, of course, that's not Williams County. And I drive by that, and I see that, and I think, God, what are we doing wrong? And I mean, this has got to be at least a big part of the reason.
You built it. You built it.
I built one right next to it. And out on the other side of it.
Thanks, thanks.
Truth to the matter is, those people had, we, we had a shortfall happen, or people were losing jobs in Los Angeles, they just moved out there, that's it.
Henry County had the highest unemployment rate at the time we built that last facility that our project products in the, in the area. Campbell Soup had closed a few things, there were, there were some changes right there. When we brought Menards in, out to Holiday City, we had twenty-eight hundred people unemployed in Williams County in, I think it was two thousand and three, that we put that deal together. Fleetwood had closed up, Arrow had closed up, a few others had closed up, it was kind of a tough time anyway, but they can answer, we'd like fourteen hundred people here. Come on, we've got them right now, here's the numbers, here's what's going on. And since they started in there, where everybody else has got more busier, taken up more people, all those people were absorbed, or retired, or got out of the market, whatever. But we've gone completely the other way now, and we should have been investing in new developments and all that stuff ten years ago, being ready, so we have this stuff up there. I, I really believe if we had housing available right now, people would come here, jobs easy to come by, houses are in fine. They're searching a big area, and they're going to go where the open, easy living is.
And your industrial park would be a lot fuller. It would be. What I would like you to do, prepare to, is to pass a resolution in favor of this project. So that when he submits, he can submit that with him.
I was not prepared for a resolution, this is really, so I apologize. We can do one of two things. We can do a resolution, but it'll, your application's on the fifteenth?
Nine.
Yeah.
We have a meeting before that. There's a six, here's a seventh, the nineteenth.
I'll find places to get it. I'll make sure they see it.
So what we can do is get a letter drafted in support signed by mayor, council, and board of public affairs, but with that, I would like each, the council and the board separately to motion approve, motion to approve the drafting of that letter. And then for the Monday night meeting on the sixth, we can have council members up here signing it, and then I can take it to the board of public affairs on the seventh, and then I'll give it to you.
I just need a scanned copy.
Okay.
If, if, if this body would want to do that.
Sure.
Yeah.
No, it's okay.
Yeah. And then maybe call the commissioners, let them know, the county commissioner.
I actually had already called the commissioners to tell them I was in favor of this project, when you guys started reaching out to the Department of Aging.
Okay.
So they were aware, but they will also, I'm assuming, write a letter of support, because quite frankly, they did for the last project. From the, the city council, it didn't, as a whole body, but not support. So, Mr. Hoopie, if you want to ask for that motion to draft a letter in support, and you have council and mayor sign it, or you can all call it, and then Mr. Long, if you would do that with the board afterward? Is that to ask for your word? Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to entertain a motion to, for a draft of a letter in support of this housing proposal as of presented.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to ask for a motion from the board to accept the same.
I'll second it. I'll, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Anna?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yeah.
Karen?
Yes, but I still have a couple of questions.
Oh, sorry.
So, I've kind of been skipped over a couple of times.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What I'm concerned with is, like, moving forward in the future. I don't have a problem with this, I'm going forward. But I do want to kind of backtrack a bit. You've built a number of these before, have there been communities that have been as small as ours, as far as the population? And let me ask the other part of the question. Does that come into, one of them might be a three-part of the question. Is there a timeline on getting the unit filled? And if so, and we don't need that timeline and have each of the units filled, does that give us a problem in applying for another unit we built here?
The occupancy requirement that Frontier has to follow. Because we're, we're guaranteeing the credits to the agency, if something goes wrong, it's coming out of us.
Too bad, too bad.
Okay, so, this project, if it's awarded, it gets, the credits are May, we'd look to close and start construction the following May. And then we would have till, till December of the following year. Yeah, so this is twenty twenty-three now. So if we get awarded twenty twenty-five, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, we are required to have that, have those units built, occupied, and compliant.
By December twenty twenty-five?
Twenty twenty-five.
And if they're not?
If they're not, it's, it's against me, not, not the city of Ryan.
No, of course not, but does it hinder us from you, from applying for another? Or even being considered to apply for another?
It could, I mean, OFA has rules that says they can do whatever they want if I don't do my job. We've always leased up, usually will lease up. Usually every unit is, is almost always spoken for before the last unit is completed.
What about the population of other towns? Have there been others that have been quite as?
How many are in Delphus? Uh, we've got forty family units right now, and then four, thirty-two.
Seventy-one hundred people in Delphus.
Okay, so it's smaller than us.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was concerned with.
Yeah.
Because some of those towns that are listed here are higher population, or near.
They are.
Higher population.
So, for example, Asheville, Ohio, do you want to talk about Nashville, though? I don't remember your group, but anyhow, it's a lot smaller than Ryan. It's, it used to be a village until a couple of years ago.
Forty-five hundred.
Ryan's Googling, yeah.
It's a little bit more now than that, because Case Valley High School, Case Valley Schools has just been booming, you know, they, they have a lot of single-family development over there. So we got, or we had, Frontier has forty senior units there now. And then the other company I worked for had another forty senior units, just down the street in the same community. So eighty units, and it's, like, I mean, and it's, it's full.
So it looks like there is always the probability, even in the community, you should build it to do more.
Yeah, and on Pipe Run, it was a, it was a family project, the one we just finished, and we were leased up well before deadline.
And are you looking at already the market study for the area?
Yeah. Well, it's, it's in process. Actually, I think it hit my email today, I haven't had a chance to review it yet. But, yeah, it's, all this, all these, the phase one, the market study, the appraisal, all the things I have to do for OFA, it always, always hits that last week before the deadline. It's just the nature of the beast.
It's good to hear it.
Yeah.
I assume this, because it's been successful, and it's tried, tried, tested, and approved.
This, this product, since Frontier started doing the garages, the attached garages on the ranch, people, people drive by, they're like, hey, you see a new condo development down the street. Well, it's not condos, it's rental wood. So, it sells itself. You know, we do dishwashers, garbage disposals, you know, all the bells and whistles in the kitchen, extra lighting, range hood, vent to the outside, you know, to help get rid of, help with the air, indoor air quality. I mean, it's all part of that enterprise green criteria that we have to follow and get a certification.
And how many, I guess, months in advance do you start taking applications?
So if we, let's say, so for example, Upper Sandusky Village that we're, we're anticipating our first couple of buildings will come online in May of this year. We've got to wait for asphalt to come down before we can actually lease those units. So, the management company is already making preparations to start pre-leasing. So the intent will be, before those buildings are even C of O, they're going to have applicants ready to go for all those units. And then as soon as they're able to move in, they'll finalize the, the compliance report. Because we do phased-in leasing, we won't build out the, we always try to do phased-in leasing where they'll be ready to go, and we can manage the traffic, and make sure everybody's safe. We'll start leasing those units, even as the last buildings that we to ensure that we're we're ahead of curve on our, on our deadline, because it's, it's, it's us. Because if we don't deliver the credits in the first year, that amount of credit comes out of us, that's a lot of money. There's no slush fund laying over here in the corner, need to pay that. So we're very diligent, we're very motivated. And that's why I do it.
So, tell, just for clarification.
Yeah.
You want that letter addressed to OFA?
You can address it to us.
All right.
Just Frontier Community Services, as, I mean, we're the developer, that's, that's the easiest way to do it. Now, something else that's coming, I don't think anybody's received yet, we are required to do public notification letters. So, all the elected officials within the project area is going to get a letter that says, this is what we're proposing. And then there also, there's also going to be contact information in there to OFA, to allow those individuals to either ask questions, or, or complain about it, or to, to put their support behind it. Yeah, because that's what's going to happen. I believe those letters probably went out, if Keegan did, well, she normally doesn't do what I ask her to do, because she's always aggressive. Those letters, those letters are going to start hitting people's desks, probably on Friday, if not Monday. So there, there will be some questions, it'll come up. That's why Dave was adamant about.
I think this meeting will create some questions, too, so for community purposes. You know, you guys have a full story here, and you know what's going on, and I think that will help with answering questions.
And you all have my business card, feel free to email me, call me. Just, you know, maybe not call me after nine P M, but.
And that's not public for everyone else?
No, well, it can be, I mean.
No, please, don't do that to yourself.
We have a, we have a website, you can contact my office, my office phone works, I'm pretty sure my voice mail works. You can call that as well.
We all are listening carefully.
Yeah. Absolutely. If you really want something done, you call Keegan.
Well, the streets, they go back through this development? Will they be private, or will they be city streets?
Private.
Private.
We do all the snow removal maintenance. Generally, the, we have them on a two- to three-year maintenance schedule for sealing and restriping. Just depends on where the project's located and how much weather affects it. So, probably every other year, every three years, we do a full seal on all the asphalt.
And I don't want to rush anybody, so if you have more questions, let me know, but they have a long drive back, and we have.
Oh, I'm fine. If you have more questions, go at it. I mean, it's a lot easier for me to ask questions here than it is to address everybody's emails one at a time, if there's a lot of them. And if I don't have the answer, I'll get it for you.
Question, if I missed it. This property, who owns this property?
Actually, Port Authority has an option on the property, from my understanding.
I take.
Who is it?
I take.
Okay.
I have taken an option, a purchase of an option.
Oh, okay.
These are four. I will sign that option.
Oh, okay, I got you.
You said?
Yes. Yeah. I just want, I was just curious how that property was going to be donated, sold to them? So you've already taken care of that?
The cost of the property will come out of the project.
Got you.
Yep.
So this is Port Authority Extended South, correct?
It actually was.
It's off Front Row.
No, it's not Front Row.
Off of Front Row, man, okay.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, we won't be, we're not anticipating extending the street, there might be some sewer that we may have, may or may not have to do, but that's, that's been part of our engineering conversations, and we think we at least have it bigger than a red box at this point.
So Portland Street won't go through as a result?
Well, okay, so here's, we.
Is it next to Autumn Chase?
It's across, yes, the way, right by CHP.
Right.
We, as a city, may extend Portland Street, we asked council to go up for bids on that, or allow Brian to go up for bids on that for fire safety. It's a street that needs to be extended and has for a long time, but Frontier is not going to exit off of that, they're gonna, they're gonna have one entrance, and it's on Fountain Grove Drive. So the extension of Portland, although the timing seems weird, is completely separate from this project, and would not impact either or. They're still gonna come, whether Portland, funding.
If we get funding, we're coming.
They're coming.
And I'm giving you, I'm giving the city an easement for the, for the road.
Yeah.
It's all been incorporated into the site.
Right, but they're not exiting off, and we are going out to bid for that at council's approval, whether they come or not. So that was, it's separate, it's right beside each other, but it is a separate.
I have a question on that. Fountain Grove sometimes gets pretty busy. Would there be a, an option that they could change and make this entrance off of Portland Street, or is that dead in the stone? I mean, it's done deal, that it'll be off of Fountain Grove Drive?
Um, I mean, I mean, I guess if the city wanted to close off the entrance on the Fountain Grove, and only make them come off of Portland, that's, that's possible, and we.
Well, Brian's sitting there shaking his head.
They wanted one entrance, controlled community one entrance.
Okay.
So the two projects are separate, completely separate.
I understand that, I understand that, but what I'm saying, if Portland Street does go through, could they possibly change and have the entrance?
They could, they would.
It just, to me, Portland Street would be easier to get out on than Fountain Grove Drive would be.
So, we have, we have these driveways that stop short of where Portland's gonna be, so in theory, you could make access.
I, I see, I see.
Sort of put more traffic in front of the vehicles.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we, we do typically like these to have a single entrance, so we can keep an eye on them. And most often, our management company will put cameras in a community building after the fact, to keep an eye on traffic. And we've also, that's a thirty-five-foot kind of hall sat in the back for fire trucks and units, and then there's probably fire hydrants placed throughout the town as well.
And what I can tell you from our visit, I mean, it was a nice day in the fall, but it was very quiet. There's not, even though there's forty-four units, there's not a people coming and going at a rapid pace.
And construction was going on at the same time.
Right, because they were doing a multi-family, but it's, it's a very quiet setting, there's not a lot of activity. I saw a couple residents kind of out, talking to each other on a sidewalk, but other than, other than that, it wasn't very busy.
No three-hundred bound dogs.
None of the dog rooms, you can, you might think of the region super, you want to take three cats.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And at the Delphus project, we actually have two entrances, one on Second Street, one off the light up. And I put a gate up across Second Street, to allow them to be able to control.
Yeah.
I wanna make sure the family units, while I'm driving through the senior units, to get to Second Street, and go to the Mexican, or whatever, so I'll let everybody come in and out, but the fire department has access to next to the community when they're out. So this is ideal for us, because we could, when it comes, when it comes to these developments, managing senior's not as hard, family deals can, can be difficult, but, you know, follow lease agreements, and we keep track of everybody, and make sure it doesn't come along.
Okay.
Hey, are there any other questions for Frontier?
No.
Or, or Port Authority this time? If not, I just have one comment to make. It was, it's uncanny that we're talking about this, because on my drive here this afternoon, I was listening to the radio, and they were talking about the impact of baby boomers on different things throughout the years, on schools, and on industry, and now we're at a point, you know, the last of the baby boomers were bought, were born in 1964, so now they're almost sixty years old, and we are having to accommodate those of us who are big boomers, becoming senior citizens, and like I say, it's uncanny that this, the timing of this, because it is really, it impacts me, it impacts a lot of people, and the effect of the baby boom and that bubble that it created is, is incredible, and now we are, are having to deal with, what do we, how do we house people like that? You know, those of us who are getting, getting older, so I, I wanna thank you.
We appreciate the, we appreciate the embrace, honestly. We're, we're happy to come up, we're happy to do this, we hope it, we hope it's successful.
I think you've really clarified a lot of things for us, and given us a lot to, to look forward to, and to discuss, and best of luck in getting the financing for all of this. And I wanna thank the Port Authority for all of the hard work that they've put into this. It's obvious that you've put a lot of legwork into it, and we really appreciate that.
Well, and I wanna thank the city staff as well, the engineering department, zoning department, they, I mean, everything that we've put on paper so far meets your guidelines, your requirements for zoning, engineering, so that's, that's a huge step, when proposing something like this to OFA, knowing what's coming, yeah, what's coming down, down the pike if we get awarded.
They just bump each other.
Good.
It was one of those tricky things where I take a folder, and I'm like, guys, we can't talk about this, I'm gonna need you to work on this.
Here, we can talk about it.
I know. Just, yeah. I, I wanna thank everyone too, it was, it was great visiting that, and I would encourage anyone, if you wanna take a day trip to Delphus and check it out, we can, we can maybe make those arrangements. It's a good place to visit.
Also, too, if anyone would wanna visit Delphus.
Next to, in between.
Just email me, let me know, I could either schedule a time to be there and meet you, or you can meet Representative Roman in conference room.
Can I, can I have one thing unrelated? So I have one thing unrelated, council and board members, the City of Brian Parks has been allowed to engage with Blizzard Auction, which you know has been going on since the Blizzard of 1978. So half of the proceeds from the auction will go to the proposed Lincoln Park, which is the all-inclusive park we're raising funds for. So if any of you would like to get a bid note and participate, or just listen to that on Saturday while it's going on, there are instructions, and there are a lot of really great prizes, some small, some big, but I did wanna let you know that was going on this Saturday. Thank you.
I don't know, did we, did we finish the vote and all that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
You're good, and I've actually communicated with the president of the commissioners, and I'm gonna have a third letter coming your way.
I appreciate that.
At this time, we have a reason to go into executive session for the acquisition of property, after a short recess. In that executive session, we would like to have city council, the BPA members, Mayor Schlade, Laura Rody, Nathan Gardner, Brian Wieland, Derek Schultz, Andy Waterston, and the members of the Williams County Port Authority, please join us in that. So we'll take a brief recess this time.